Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, December 21, the last city council meeting of 2021. We'll go ahead and get started this evening by reading our roll.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Here.
Knightzert?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr? Brecky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
All right, just as a note, I believe Counselor Starr at some point will be joining us. Maybe he's right there. Counselors, it's not him, but he will be with us via phone, I believe. So to give our invocation tonight, we welcome back Reverend Brett Best with Emmanuel Baptist Church. Reverend Best, thanks for being back here again. I'd ask that you stand for his invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pray with me, please. To the God who is above us and within us, we offer this prayer. This longest night of the year, on this night, we seek the light. Reveal your truth and enlighten your children. Guide us in ways that accomplish the greatest good for the greatest number of people. We are grateful for these servants of the people of Sioux Falls who do not flinch before the tasks of governance, but fulfill their duties with integrity. Give them a good meeting this evening. Bless our efforts with success that is not just material, but also uplifts the spirits of all our citizens. Remind us to be grateful for your many kindnesses, especially in this Christmas season. I offer these declarations in the name of the newborn King, Jesus Christ. Let all who agree say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we thank Reverend Best for his invocation tonight. Before we move to item four, I just want to confirm, Counselor Starr, did you join us via phone as well?
I did. I figured out the technology.
All right. So we have all eight counselors here. We'll move on to item four. It's our consent agenda. Any items to be pulled there? Otherwise, I'll take a motion on it.
Move approval. Second, Kylie.
All right. Was that Counselor Selberg? Did you make that motion? Motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to approve our consent agenda. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Jump ahead to item 20, which is our regular agenda. I'd look for a motion on that, please.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to approve our agenda tonight. Any discussion on that, counsel? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote on that one, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Before we get on with our regular agenda then, just want to review public input for our regular agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. During general public input at the end of the meeting, comments will be limited to no more than three minutes per person. So with that being said, we'll move on to our next item, please.
Item 21, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license for Shively Development LLC, DH Pub Sports, 8605 West 26th Street, CUP not required pending final inspections for health and building services. Item 22, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license for Dragons Den Comics and Games LLC. Dragons Den Comics and Games, 7218 West 41st Street, CUP not required pending final inspections for building services. Item 23, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license and new 2022 retail wine cider license for SRS Incorporated Club Connections, 207 West 85th Street, CUP not required pending final inspections for health and building services. Item 24, request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2021-22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license for SRS Incorporated Club Connections, 207 West 85th Street. Item 25, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license and new 2022 retail wine cider license for SRS Incorporated Diamond Connections, 205 West 85th Street, CUP not required pending final inspections for health and building services. Item 26, request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2021-22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license for SRS Incorporated Diamond Connections, 205 West 85th Street. Item 27, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license and new 2022 retail wine cider license for Glamour Nails and Spa LLC, 4017 West 41st Street, CUP not required pending final inspections for building services. Item 28, new 2022 packaged liquor license for Patel Ventures LLC, India Bazaar, 3212 East 10th Street, CUP not required pending final inspections for building services. Item 29, new 2022 packaged liquor license for Ashna LLC, Hangover Liquor and Smoke Mart, 4703 East Arrowhead Parkway, CUP not required pending final inspections for building services. Item 30, transfer of 2022 packaged liquor license from Neon Properties LLC, Neon Casino, 4101 East 10th Street to Cash LLC, 1027 South Cleveland Avenue, CUP not required. Item 31, transfer of 2022 packaged liquor license from Willikers Incorporated, 3625 West Avera Drive to Main and Main LLC, 4304 West Empire Place, CUP not required. Item 32, new 2022 packaged liquor license for Willikers Incorporated, Willikers, 3625 West Avera Drive, CUP not required.
Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions that you have for items 21 through 32, and I also need to request a motion to withdraw item 21 per the applicant's request.
All right, thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items tonight? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Jamie on these? Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
I'm just curious about the Dragon's Den item. What would that allow them to do? And is there, I'm just curious if there's a representative here. I'm not necessarily opposed. I'm just curious what, you know, what it's going to be used for. Having, I have at least enough familiarity with, you know, what the facility is like and what they do there, so.
I've not been there myself, but if I recall when I met with them, they have games and such that you can try out at their location and play. This particular license would allow them to sell all types, excuse me, all types of retail malt beverages and South Dakota farm wines, and it would also allow them to sell it both on sale and off sale, meaning they could allow someone to consume it while there and then sell six packs or bottles of wine to go.
Okay. They have a lot of adults there, but there's also kids, too. So I guess I'd just be curious to hear kind of how it's going to work and how your security is going to work, if that would be.
Good evening.
Hello, I'm Aaron. I'm the general manager for Dragon's Den. Robert isn't able to make it today. He's the owner. So we kind of had this idea where we wanted to be able to do like demo games and drinking in one corner of the store while the rest of the gaming area was still available for everybody else. We'd require like wristbands and proof of identification at time of purchase of the liquor and to have the liquor in a specific sort of portion of the store. We haven't gone through everything that we wanted to do with it yet, but we knew that we needed to get the license request in before the end of the year, so.
So near the back, you've got like all these tables and things. So is there going to be like a section of tables or an area that's only going to be?
That is the plan as of right now, yes.
Okay. And they're just going to card everybody that?
Yeah.
Will they, will they be, they'd have to purchase it? It's not complimentary or?
Correct. It will be purchased.
Are you selling it to take out as well, or?
That was not the plan. It was just for use onsite.
But like if an adult just wants to be able to enjoy a drink while they're playing a game or doing whatever, that's just an option you're looking at?
We did not plan on allowing them to take it to the tables for like card games and stuff, just for the area then in the site.
Oh, there would be like a separate site that you would sit and consume, you would just consume?
Correct. Then, from what I understand, from what me and Robert have talked about, it's going to be, well, not like walled off, but like it'll be its own section of the game area where if you're in there, you need to either have the band or be with someone. And if you don't have the band, you won't be allowed to consume.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Aaron. Any other questions for either Aaron, Jamie, on any of these other items? All right, then I'd look for a motion to withdraw item 21 first, please.
So move, Jensen.
Second.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to withdraw item 21. Let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky? Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Now I would look for a motion to approve items 22 to 32, please.
So move, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move on to our next item, please.
Item 33, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, setting the regular city election date for Tuesday, April 12, 2022, and authorizing a joint election with the Sioux Falls School District number 49-5. Sponsors, council members Jensen and Sale.
Counselor, excuse me, Tom, go ahead.
Mayor, this sets the date of election as stated in the title for April 12. It also provides for a runoff election on May 3. Importantly, it also allows us to combine with the Sioux Falls School District. They've already passed a resolution authorizing such a combined election.
All right, thanks, Tom. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? All right, counselors, can we get a motion on the floor on this?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sales. There a discussion on this item? All right, let's take a vote then, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 34, please.
Item 34, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, proposing a city charter amendment for the 2022 April election under the authority of Charter Article 8, Charter Amendment Section 801B. Sponsors, council members Selberg and Knightzert.
Counselor Selberg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to repeat the presentation from last week, but I would like to highlight a couple of points for consideration before the vote tonight. Again, it's my belief that the compensation for the position of mayor of this city is far below where it needs to be, and it has been for years. After 25 years under this charter form of government, this amendment will provide the voter an opportunity to reevaluate the mayor's salary and recalibrate to reflect our current economy and job market. The last 18 months has taught us more than ever. It's crucial to attract and have the best in the seats of leadership, and none more vital than the office of mayor, and compensation is a big piece of that equation. We are in campaign season. There is still time for candidates to emerge. It is a mayoral election, which means turnout should be strong, and as many citizens as possible will be able to weigh in on this charter amendment. And as I continue to emphasize here, this will be put in the decision of the voter's hands. While I still firmly believe the mayor's compensation should be equivalent to the highest compensated positions that serve and report to him or her, I also realize this is an issue that hasn't been tackled for years while the wage inequity hasn't continued to grow. And trying to fix it all in one fill swoop may rightly give citizens pause and maybe some sticker shock at the numbers which have been thrown around, and that's understandable. But remember, this has been accumulating for about 25 years. The goal here is to keep the focus on the issue at hand and not to take, and to take a step to make a correction. If not the full one, then at least one that gets this in the right direction. So with that being said, I will be in support of the Brecky amendment being offered tonight to reset the amount of the wage adjustment. I would encourage my colleagues to support this as well. And my hope is that soon after this is passed, we can work to identify a process and criteria upon which the mayor's salary could periodically be reviewed to ensure it remains at a level that achieves the objectives of attracting great leadership for our community, and we avoid getting in this predicament again down the road. There's probably a good reason this hasn't been brought up for years. It's neither an easy nor comfortable nor a popular topic to highlight, especially in these seats, especially in an election year, but I am doing it because I believe it's long overdue and the right thing for our city and future. My apologies to my colleagues for dragging you into the hornet's nest here, but I do believe the time has come to address it. I thank each of you for stepping up and doing so. In summary, I have two slides tonight. The first is a city leadership organizational chart, which you see up right now. As I've repeated a time or two over the last couple of weeks, you know, our mayor in a nutshell oversees 1,300 full-time employees, 11 city departments, an annual budget of $650 million, a city that's growing at a rate of approximately 3% per year. And as you can see by this chart, he or she sits at the top of the heap for our city leadership. The buck does stop there. As you consider what's before you tonight and weigh the various points being made, my request to both my colleagues tonight and those of you who would step into the voting booth in April would be that you please ask yourself this question as you look at the numbers on the next slide. If you look at this, ask yourself, does this make any sense to you? Does the same person that sits at the peak of leadership for Sioux Falls with all the responsibilities that we've just discussed, that same person sits at number 19 on the compensation chart? Does that make sense to you? If it does, your vote in April will be an easy one. You can vote no. If this does not make sense to you, if this is a head-scratcher, as it has been for me for a long time now, you have the ability to make the needed correction and recalibrate this number to reflect our current economy, market, and times, so it's where it needs to be to attract the best to be the mayor of your city of Sioux Falls. Again, this will lie in the hands of you, the voter. Thank you.
All right, thank you, counselor. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight? Come on up.
Good evening, Teresa Staley.
Welcome back, ma'am.
Thank you. How much time do I get?
Uh, you have five minutes.
Five minutes. Five minutes. Five minutes. So what I wanted to say is, I was, of course, involved in government and in town here, as many of you were, when this thing, when our form of government changed. And we recently, while I was on the council, we heard from Joe Kirby and Dale Froelich, who were the framers of our new form of government, the strong mayor form. And the, many of you on the council here heard them saying that their intent was to have a council that would work about 10 hours a week, and you would be a board of directors. So you really weren't going to be that involved in the nitty-gritty day-to-day business of the city. And I think we've seen our city emerge, and I've watched this closely since Dave Munson was our mayor, but we have the mayor as an orchestrator of the mechanics of how the city operates, but the real work is done by these department heads. They have the degrees in the departments that they are managing. I have for some time now thought that we need to go back to something similar to what we had before, which was the commission form of government, where you had commissioners who were full-time overseeing each department. You had a balance of power. You didn't have one person making all the decisions. And you didn't have this heavy upper management salary structure that you just showed us, Counselor Selberg. Thank you. Many people think that our salaries in Sioux Falls are a little out of whack when you compare them with other salaries for other positions in the region. So to say that that would be the rationale for giving our mayor a $64,000 raise, a lot of people in our community would disagree with that. Also, you know, for 10 hours a week or whatever we're putting in, I know I put in a heck of a lot more than I, when I was on the council, but they wanted this position to be servitude. They didn't want to attract people to our elected positions for money. That was their motivation in changing the form of government. So I'm hesitant to go down the road that says we're going to be adding more incentive financially to run for office. I will say that, for the record, when I was on the council, I did ask for some benefits. I wanted to be able to at least buy in personally to the insurance program because as a council member, we had no benefits. And so I am grateful. I reached out to some of you about the Brecky amendment when I read it in the paper today. Some of you did return my phone call. I appreciate that. But, and I'm also appreciative that you're going to let this go to a vote so that the public can be involved because at the end of the day, it's the public's business and the public's money. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak on this topic tonight? Good evening.
Greetings. I'm Davis Alkides, and I'm also here to talk about this agenda item on city leadership pay. So like Teresa Staley said, the last revision of elected leadership pay was way back in 1995. In the interim, your salaries have been adjusted due to inflation, but the city has really grown tremendously, and that makes more responsibility for all of you. I was going to say all of us, but that's a little premature. And maybe it's time for a major review of elected leadership pay. So here's your proposed charter change, and the big note there in the middle is that it's a 49% pay raise, and that's just going to be hard for a lot of people to agree with. Now, if you're trying to figure out what a mayor is worth, that can be challenging because there's so many different standards for comparison. You might look at how a mayor racks up against a CEO, and then you would say that, oh, my gosh, vastly, grossly underpaid. But if you look at how CEOs are overpaid, maybe that's not so bad. Underpaid compared to department heads, but the change relative to the status quo is kind of high. City is a lot bigger, more responsibility. And what I need for salary just kind of really isn't relevant because I'm living on peanuts now. And if I made 80 grand a year, I'd be feeling pretty rich. But if you put all that together, what's the best overall compromise? My guess was 160 grand. And then this, the same charter change talks about city council pay, and that's also an interesting thing to try to figure out because it's a part-time job with unspecified number of hours that you need to work. You've got a couple of meetings, three times a month, but a lot of contact with other issues like what's the mayor's and the budgets and stuff. But I'm a little kind of uncomfortable by setting your payroll that to that of the mayor because it's kind of thinking like the council is an afterthought instead of a primary consideration. And 20 grand just seems kind of ridiculous for all of your responsibility. 33 sounds a whole lot more realistic. But for such a large change, I think you might want to concur with voters because they're generally unhappy when people vote themselves on large changes in salary. And here's something else I've been thinking about for quite some time, but really haven't presented here. We now have three at-large council members and five council members that manage districts. It'd be interesting to see what happens when you change the at-large council members to full-time instead of part-time. You might grant more power to the legislature, pull some back from the executive, and if you do that, of course, you need to pay them a little better. If you can have somebody work full-time, you need to give them a full-time salary. And it would be interesting to see what happens if you publicly fund the political campaigns of the new at-large council members. I think it would have a big change of power with that change. And since I'm not doing general public input, you got to have a good, a good landscape. This is actually a night scene in my backyard, so.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on item 34 tonight? All right, let's get a motion, and then we can go into discussion with the council here.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Counselor Knightzert. We'll move into any discussion on this item.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
You bet. Go ahead.
I would like to amend section 9.05F by striking 195,000 and inserting 165,000.
All right.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Counselor Brecky, seconded by Counselor Erickson. Counselor Brecky, you want the floor on that?
In addition to what's already been said, I do think it is appropriate every so often, you know, to review the situation and try to stay current so you don't get so far behind that you have to do a shocking amount in order to bring things up to speed. When I looked at this, 195,000, one of the things that I guess I wanted to add to the discussion is really, in today's environment, the salary that is given the head of government is rarely the motivation for running for office. And there's been all kinds of studies on this, you know, why people went for political office. And really, it dates back to after the Civil War and the Industrial Resolution, Revolution. Originally, I mean, the highest paid people in the country were politicians, and they were well-respected and high-paid. And then that switched, and the highest paid people and some of the best and brightest moved into the private sector and made their, made their success story in business. Politicians still were revered and esteemed, but for years and years and years, they've lagged behind in pay. And so what I'm trying to do with this amendment was to strike some sort of a balance here because I don't really believe that this is going to attract more capable, qualified people into the office. But I do think it is a fair salary. This amendment creates a fair salary. It may be a little high. After actually doing my homework this week and looking at mayoral pay, Jim David, if you could bring that up, and, you know, again, looking at our salary adjustment in mayoral pay. First, we'll just look at the mayoral pay around the country. I think that's more comparing apples to apples than really looking at CEO pay. And you'll see that there are, in our region, this is just in the region, you know, our regional area, and some of these don't really apply because there's, they're a different form of government. I think, I think Des Moines and Fargo are both commissioned form of government, so those responsibilities are divided, so they don't make as much money. But I do believe Minneapolis, St. Paul, Omaha, Kansas, and Denver, I think all of those are, have real similar responsibilities that our mayor has. And so when I looked at my amendment, I was struggling. In fact, I told Councilmember Selberg before this meeting, I really wanted to hear public testimony. I really wanted to hear people weigh in on this because I really, it almost looked to me that really at 165, I was a little high, that maybe it should have been more like 145. But because these, these issues aren't reviewed frequently, it doesn't trouble me that we would be coming in at 165, again, assuming the public agrees with that and supports that. So I went ahead and left my amendment at 165. But that will put us now at the top. Even at 165, that will put us well at the top of what mayors receive in our region. And I do think it is important that, you know, that this discussion be centered around, you know, public service because that is truly what motivates people to run. And again, there are studies on this. It's public service and narcissism. Some people run for attention in the free lunches. Some people run because they are just totally dedicated to public service. And I, having raised that issue, I do want to say I certainly, of all the people around this dais, I do believe all of you ran for, for your sincere dedication to public service. That's what I've seen, and that's what I've seen in the past mayors. And I just want to give a brief run-through of the mayors that I know in my history, dating back to a radio disc jockey, a Greyhound bus driver, realtor, realtor, banker, banker, and now business owner. And this city has flourished under all of those leaderships. So I don't want the discussion to be just about money. I think that the public passion for office is so important that it doesn't matter who you are, and it's important to understand that when this person walks into office, they only have one qualification. It's not about their skill sets. It's not about their education. It's not about their success in business, their span of control, all those things that those department heads have to have. They've got to bring all those things to the table, higher education, you know, years of experience. That's why they get paid the big bucks. But when each one of us walk into office, and when this mayor walks into office, all he needs is an election certificate. That is the only qualification that he has for that office. And so I think we have to be careful about focusing too much on the money because the passion, I think, is what drives a success. And I think when you look back at the And I think when you look back at the history, it's the passion of the individuals and the dedication to public service along with directors that the city has made a commitment over the years. All the years I've been involved in city government, the city's made a commitment to be slightly above market. And that's what they, and that's what their pay skills, if you wanna put those up there, that's what their pay skills suggest, and that's what the city continues to be committed to. And those salaries are going higher because of, they are influenced by what's going on in the corporate segment. And those are the entities we're competing with to get those employees. But they do bring together, they do bring to the table, higher education, specific skill sets, years of experience, varying spans of control. And they provide that framework that allows the success of that person that comes in and sits on the top with the passion. And so I am bringing this amendment because I think that, I think 195 is too high. I think it's inappropriate. And I think 165 is something I'm far more comfortable with, and that should serve us well into the future.
All right, thank you, Councilor. Other discussion on Councilor Breckie's amendment here? All right, Councilor Selberg?
I just make one quick comment. There's a lot of good feedback there from Councilor Breckie. And she's done her homework here, and I appreciate that. I would throw in that, when she talks about some of those numbers that were thrown up there by different mayors, what we found over the last few months doing our homework on this is just trying to find apples to apples was really tough. And I know that a couple were referenced on that list. I know like Kansas City was up there. Well, Kansas City is a manager form of government. Minneapolis was up there. That's a weak mayor form of government. And I think you'd mentioned Des Moines and Fargo. It's a commission form of government. So I mean, it's just all over the place everywhere you go. So when you're trying to pull in and really do apples to apples, we ran into that a lot. So a lot of due diligence was paid on this. And, but I appreciate your argument. You made some good points there. So I just wanted to point that out with some of those salaries that were put up there, too. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilor. Other discussion, Councilor Nitzer?
Yeah, Councilor Breckie is right. You don't do it for the money. You do it for the service. And I'm sure that's why all of the previous mayors and councilors have served. I do like the amendment, though. It does, you know, it's just gonna make it obviously more palatable. And regardless of however it goes, I totally will honor whatever the voters decide. I think, you know, the point is not to make sure that we're, that it's some recruitment tool or there's, it's in line with the private sector because this is about public service. But I do think it's time to revisit it. And it does potentially get it more in line to compensating whoever's in that chair, whether they ran for that or not for that reason, a little bit more in line with the responsibility that they carry and just more fairly compensating them. So I think it's a good thing, but I think the amendment's very good and very pragmatic. And as was, you know, there's no perfect number. At some point, you're kinda picking a number. That's really the problem here. So, but I think a good amendment, worth supporting.
All right, thank you, Councilor. Councilor Breckie, go ahead.
Just one final piece of information, just because I received it, I got it. I was also just looking at governors. And if you look at governors across the country, if you go with the 195, there'll be only one governor in the entire country that is at 195 or higher. And currently, if you go with the amendment as I proposed it, that'll put you at the segment of some of the highest-paid governors in the country. Our own governor, Kristi Noem, has paid $118,000. So I think what we're doing is responsible because, again, it's not gonna be reviewed very often. But we are putting it, we are placing it, from a government standpoint, we're placing it at a higher range.
All right, thank you, Councilor. Any other discussion on the Breckie amendment here? All right, hearing none, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that amendment is gonna pass eight to zero, so we're at the main motion as amended. Discussion on the main motion as amended, Council. All right, seeing none, let's take a vote on that then, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that item's gonna pass eight to zero. Move to item 35, please.
Item 35, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, proposing two city charter amendments for the 2022 April election under the authority of Charter Article 8, Charter Amendment Section 8.01B. Sponsors: Councilmembers Kylie and Erickson.
Councilor Kylie, you gonna speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this is the second time going through this, I will go through it again. I'll try to be a little more brief than I was last week. It does state, the agenda item states, "Two city charter amendments." The first one is under 2.05, and it's except as authorized by Charter Section 4.03. This was necessary so that what changes we are implementing in 4.03, that there were not any conflicts between 2.05 and 4.03. The major change is under 4.03, and it begins the third line down. "Notwithstanding Charter Section 2.05B, the legal officer may be removed by," and this is the change, major change, "an affirmative vote of six or more members of the council." And then it continues as it was before, basically, "or by the mayor with the consent of five or more members of the council." So that's the major change. "The legal officer may be removed by an affirmative vote of six or more members of the council." Then it continues a little further down. "The consent of a majority of the council is not required for the expiration of the legal officer's term of office that occurs upon the mayor's expiration of term of office. The legal officer shall serve as chief legal advisor to the city council." No changes were made there, but I just wanted to emphasize that particular point that the mayor would still have the ability to appoint or decide not to reappoint the legal officer at the end of his term. And then the very last line, under 4.03 there, "The role of the legal officer is to provide counsel in the best interests of the city, not the interests of one inquiring source." And then continuing on to the next page, sections 3 and 4, they were added. And this is because they were included in the 2021 ninth edition of the model charter, which this proposal was patterned off of. But section 3, "If the majority of the registered voters of the city voting upon those proposed charter amendments vote in favor of them, these charter amendments shall become effective 30 days after the initial canvas certifying its adoption by the voters." So in other words, this will go to the voters. Section 4, pursuant to South Dakota codified law 91913, "This ordinance provides for an election and shall become effective upon its passage and publication." It's unusual that we have somebody that works for us, yet we, the council, do not have the ability to dismiss or fire that individual. This proposed charter amendment will change that. Back in 2014, an amendment was on the ballot, which did pass, that required consent of the council if the mayor decided to release or fire the city attorney in midterm. I thought it was odd at that time that this provision, the council's ability to fire the city attorney, was not included. So I'm rectifying what I thought was maybe an oversight back at that time. This is about the position, not the current occupant. I wanna make that very clear. In fact, we had discussed not putting this into effect until 2024 to emphasize that point, that it is not about the sitting city attorney, the current city attorney. But we decided to remove that delay of enactment because it could be confusing if there are other charter amendments on the ballot. As I've already mentioned, it's supported by the 2021 ninth edition of the model city charter, which our form of government is based on. Lastly, Deputy City Attorney Karen Leonard checked for legality and form, and she is here this evening again, if you have any questions for her. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Come on up.
David Okitis again, talking about agenda item 35, city attorney. So here's the change that I'm talking about today. That last line that Councilor Kylie talked about, the role of the legal officer. Well, I tend to think that the government of Sioux Falls should work for the citizens of Sioux Falls. So that would imply that the city attorney should work for the best interest of Sioux Falls citizens. So that's my recommended change to that particular verbiage on the screen. You don't want people to think that the city attorney has the best interest of city government officials at heart because the city should work for the citizens. So that's my recommended change. So like I kind of already said, who does the city attorney work for? Who does city government work for? If the city government works for people, then the city attorney should likewise work for the people. And I'm kinda wondering why in the charter it talks about a legal officer, whereas I've always heard about a city attorney. If you're gonna talk about a city attorney, let's just call it city attorney everywhere. So I would recommend that you change the title of the section from legal officer to city attorney. That's all.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, Council, let's get a motion on the floor. We can move to any discussion.
Move to approve?
Second Erickson.
Okay, motion by Kylie, seconded by Erickson to approve 35. Discussion, Council, on that. All right, seeing none, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Move to item 36, please.
Item 36, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 39, Personnel Regulations and Benefits, Retirement and Pension, Section 39.036, Application to Appointed Officers. Sponsors: Councilmembers Kylie and Erickson.
Councilor Kylie, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. Again, I'll try to be brief as this is, again, the second reading and second time through this. The major change is under Section B of 39.036. We've added city attorney to that line. So it reads, "Except for the city attorney, police chief, and fire chief, anyone holding an appointed office on or before December 31, 2015, who at the time of his or her appointment thereto was in the civil service of the city shall," and then it continues on. I want to emphasize that point, that line, "who at the time of his or her appointment thereto was in the civil service of the city." So what that means in this particular case, it does not apply to our current city attorney as he was not in the employ of the city at the time of his appointment. So this would apply only to individuals, not only the city attorney, but the police chief and the fire chief, if they were in the employ of the city of Sioux Falls at the time of their appointment to their position. Then we had to add it again under Section C there, so you'll see city attorney added there as well. And then dropped the third line down, it says, "Upon his or her removal from appointed office or absence of reappointment or resignation in good standing." We added that short section, "or absence of reappointment or resignation in good standing," just to make sure that it brought some clarity to the intent of this particular change, that they would be returned to his or her former position and pay grade and classification. Then the very last line under C, I'd just like to point out, we've added city attorney there again, and I'll read that whole line. "This provision does not apply to a city attorney, police chief, or fire chief who has been removed from appointed office for any reason that would warrant a demotion, suspension, or discharge of any employee who is subject to this chapter." In other words, again, they have to be in good standing. Being the legal counsel or the city attorney for a government entity such as the city of Sioux Falls, it's unique. It's unlike being legal counsel for a law firm or for an individual in private practice. So I think it behooves us to implement this to ensure that we attract the best and the brightest for this position. And so, yes, that means that we are trying to encourage the deputy city attorney and the assistant city attorneys to apply for this position if and when they become available because we have a wealth of information that's within these individuals working for us and serving us so very well. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thanks, Councilor. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? All right, let's get a motion on the floor.
Move to approve?
Second Erickson.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Erickson to approve this item. Let's move into any discussion here. Councilor Breckie?
I'd like to make a motion to amend. Motion to amend section 39.036B by striking "except" through chief and on through 2015 and by inserting "or absence of reappointment or resignation in good standing between appointed office and B, returned civil service between former and position and grade and classification between pay and as an employee and by striking paragraph C."
All right, we have a motion. We have a second for that?
Second Starr.
All right, we have a motion by Councilor Breckie, seconded by Councilor Starr on that amendment. Councilor Breckie, you wanna unpack that?
I do. What this amendment does for the benefit of the public, because it's kind of confusing when you see it in writing, is this makes, this really, in the briefest sense, gives the same bump-back rights that now the city attorney, the chief of police, and the fire chief have to all city directors. And the reason I'm proposing it is because I think this is a philosophical debate and a philosophical question. It's a philosophy, and you either do it for all of them or none of them. And again, I will use history to support my motion. Back in the five-commissioned form of government, the appointed officers could be dismissed by three of the five commissioners. And it never happened because the three commissioners would never, even if they didn't like a director, they never wanted to de-seed or dethrone somebody else's director, and the director could just fire them on their own. So that, for years and years, those positions served as if they were career professionals in a private organization. So fast forward, and then when we changed from the five-commissioned form of government to the strong mayor form of government, it was realized that our government would now not be in a position of these career professionals. And a lot of mid-managers were really wondering and questioning, you know, what their career path might be with the city. And it was clear that under this form of government, it would eventually operate more like the state government where the governor comes in and they put all their own people in, particularly their own city attorney, or their own attorney, particularly their own chiefs of staff, sometimes a complete overthrow. In this last mayoral election, it wasn't an insertion by the mayor of all new people, but a lot of people resigned. They kinda left with that mayor, and almost all of the directors were new. Well, acknowledging that this was an issue back when we were implementing this, what we were trying to do by adding bump-back rights was to try to be able to harvest the talent in the mid-management ranks, to encourage them rather than to get good education, training, expertise, and then look for a job in the private sector, to try to, you know, encourage them to go ahead and try to seek those positions, knowing that even though they might be performing just fine, for any multitude of reasons, they could be just changed out for someone else, you know, at the pleasure of the mayor. And so that's why I say it's a philosophy. If you're going to give bump-back rights, it's because you want to give those mid-managers the encouragement and the security of knowing that they can take a shot at the top and that at least they have the ability to bump back, you know, if it doesn't work out or if they're in good standing, again, and if they're unseated for, you know, somebody else that the mayor wants instead. Even if it's only long enough for them to, you know, re-grasp their heels and move off, you know, into another, you know, into another profession or into another place. So I've seen us, we're kinda picking away at it. I mean, they took it out. I mean, they took it out. I don't know who did it, and I don't know the history of why it was done. But I see us putting it back piece by piece. First, we did the police chief, and then the fire chief. And with each one, and now the city attorney, we're laboring over explaining why those positions are so special, that, you know, they really need those bump-back rights. And I would simply say, if you support this amendment, what you're saying is, because you can do that, you can go to all the positions, the librarian, the health department, you can go to all of them and show that those positions are special, and they should have the bump-back rights. So, I'm saying, let's just make a once-and-for-all decision about we're either going to allow this to happen or not allow this to happen. And I would say in support of it, that in talking to Bill O'Toole several years ago about how often it was used over the years that it was in place, and it was between four and six times, it never caused any problem. It was a pain for him, because it's kind of a domino effect, but there's always enough movement and positions open and being filled in the city to make it happen. And while it was a slight inconvenience, the people that used it and successfully bumped back didn't cause any problems for the mayor. They just, you know, sat in the previous position. The vast majority of department heads just left and got jobs otherwise. But it's not a big deal. But I do think that it does encourage your mid-management talent to, you know, take the chance and take the risk of maybe moving into those, you know, those appointed seats.
All right, thank you. Discussion on this amendment, Counsel Erickson.
Counsel, for the sponsor of the amendment, if I can, Mr. Mayor, how many would this impact for our current elected folks, our current elected directors? How many would be allowed to be bumped back?
Just the directors.
No, I know. Currently, of the people that are in those roles, how many could be bumped back?
How many, you mean, would be, have served in office?
That this would apply to, currently?
That I don't know.
Because I think it's not very many. I think it's just Jody.
Because they're all brand-new under this mayor, pretty much.
Right. So, my point is with that is, I know you said you didn't realize the history of us kind of picking away. Myself and Counsel, Counsel Kylie and I were on this when it came up, and it ended up coming down to a tie-breaking vote when the bump-back was brought forward. We tried to amend it out, to have police and fire not. They are so specific. What are you going to do if you're the police chief? Go be a mall cop for J.C. Penney's? Probably not. There's not a lot that you can do that is so specific to the police industry or the fire industry, unless you move. And so, we tried to remove that. We were unsuccessful. It was broken by former Mayor Huether's vote to tie it, to allow it to be everyone. And so, after he had left, we tried, I know Counsel Kylie and Sale, Counsel Sale brought it forward to have those two, because there's such a specific industry for that. And so, the intent with the attorney is really seeing the benefit of having a city attorney with some municipality experience is great. If you look at the governor or any government, when they run for office, they want their picks. They want, they may or may not keep people, and you truly are serving at the pleasure of your governor or the mayor. Private sector does not do this. When you go for a promotion, you know that there is risk your new boss could fire you. You're not going to get a new boss, and generally, they're going to bump you back. Any job or any role you take is risk. And so, I did sponsor this with Counsel Kylie, because I feel like these three areas are so darn specific in that area. And I do think that while there may not have been problems, and to be honest, no one's going to know if they're problems, because they're employee issues. Those aren't public. So, if there were problems in the past, those files are closed because they're employee issues. I, no offense, Mayor, but I would hate to be in your position and have that bump-back there for someone that you wanted to move somebody around, and then you're stuck with them. It's just what it is. We've got great city employees, but I think that causes an extra layer of drama, unnecessary. If all of the sudden you bump back one person, and all of the sudden, the person in middle management is now their boss, or however that could potentially work, moving them around. So, for me, I can't support the amendment. I really do support the city attorney as well as fire and police, because it's so specialized. But I truly believe that, you know, this is same way as private sector as well, and I feel that the process in which is there is good. There's risk with any job that you take. And so, for me, I'll vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Jensen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the former speaker, Counsel Erickson, as well as, I'm not going to sponsor it as a bump-back for all. I think, like we talked about earlier when I got on the council, Counsel Kylie and Sale talked about the very specific specialized skills of the fire and the police, and that's why I was okay with supporting that. And now that I've come to find how specific municipal law is to be able to recruit from the ranks and give them the option to bump back, it almost has a similar perspective as the fire and the police chiefs. But I wouldn't say that the same to our Director of Finance, who could go and work at seventy-two banks and be okay in Sioux Falls. The same goes for a lot of the other individuals that the mayor has selected to become the directors. When those directors take those positions, they understand the risk that they are serving at the pleasure of the mayor. And if the mayor doesn't get re-elected, they assume that they will have to go find another opportunity in the city of Sioux Falls or elsewhere. And I think that it's that very reason why I am not going to support the amendment, and then I will go on to support the ordinance as written. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Counsel Sale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all these good points, and it is kind of a philosophical thing. I'd just like to add a little flavor to that. I think in today's environment, we have, as a city, a very good crop of, they're not department heads, but they're very important to their department. They are really doing a great job, whether it be in finance, whether it be in planning, whether it's across the board. Honestly, I will tell you, some will not seek a director's position knowing that this is a finite term that the mayor serves. They might not be at the end of their career when that changes. And for an example, I mean, we might get a Green Bay Packers fan next, and God forbid, he'd want to change the department heads out. Well, if you have Joe that's moved up and moved to the department head and has done a good job, and he's not supporting that specific team, there's nothing wrong with moving him back to a position that he's comfortable with and that he's done a very good job with. I think by allowing the bump-back universally across the department heads, and I understand there might only be four total out of all of them that could do that. Because when Mayor Tenaken, you've got to remember, he's appointed a lot of department heads. They've all come from the outside, nobody from the inside yet. And we all know that we've got a great group of people. I mean, I can look at fire, because I'm intimately familiar with that. Throughout the years, Dick Hange left and went to be the FEMA director. Bob Ray left, and he went to be the adjutant general in Connecticut. Steve Dirksen left, and he went to be the, he's currently the fire chief in Fargo. Recently, Jeff Helman's left, and he's the fire chief of someplace down in Arizona. So, we have the talent here. I would like to keep them here, and that's why I would encourage you to rethink your position and support the amendment. And if you don't, certainly support the main motion that we can do that. That's my two cents. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Other discussion on the amendment here that's in front of us? Counsel Brecky, go ahead.
Just a couple of things. I would also add that that issue has come up with the police department. Clark Queering, you know, was police chief for a short time, and then ended up moving, he moved out of the city and found a job in a smaller department. So, I still have a struggle saying that, I still think you can make a good case for each of the directors, that they have special skills that they're bringing to the table, and that police and fire, they can land in a lot of different places as well, and that it really is a philosophical thing, and I hope you'll support the amendment.
All right. Any other discussion on this amendment? All right, see none. Let's take a vote on the amendment, please.
Counsel members Jensen?
No.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Okay, the amendment passes five to three. So, now we're back to the main motion as amended. Discussion on that now. Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
I'm just going to state that regardless of what your feeling is about the amendment, I do hope that you support the main purpose of bringing this forward, and that is that we are including the city attorney in this language. And vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Erickson?
Thank you for saying that, and I do want to clarify that while I didn't support the amendment, I will support this as passed. I still struggle with it, but I feel like it's the right thing, and I know where it's going, so.
All right, thanks, Counsel. Counsel Nitzer, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll support it as well, and that one I really struggled with. I think Counsel Brecky is right, it is a philosophical issue. As somebody who's worked in the private sector his entire life, I mean, I've always been at will. I've never had any bump-back or, you know, any, I mean, we have, unfortunately, we have what we call RIFs and V-RIFs pretty frequently, voluntary reductions in force and reductions in force, and we just had another one. And so, you know, you never know what day is your last day. All you can do is give it your all and wherever things land. But I also understand that there is a unique political component to government, and so that's why I've supported these in a limited capacity. As was noted, I don't think you have a whole lot of people that necessarily qualify for bump-back in other departments. And in those instances, when they can move forward, we do have a lot of really great talent. I'm hoping that this will be something that's not going to hold them back, where they'll be willing to maybe step forward, where maybe they weren't before, and then we had to go search elsewhere, and we had the talent in-house. So, I will support it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel. Other discussion, Counsel, on this item? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, Tom.
Counsel members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass seven to one. Next item, please.
Item Thirty-Six, First Reading and Ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located twenty-five oh eight dash twenty to twenty-eight oh nine North Bentgrass Court from the M.H. Manufactured Housing District to the R.T. One Single Family Residential Traditional District, number one-five-three-eight-one-dash-twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January Fourth, Two Thousand Twenty-Two. Private applicant, Southeastern Development Foundation, Lynn Keller Forbes.
Jason, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application, and the owner is C. Cog with Lynn Keller Forbes. It's located in the Bentgrass Grasslands Edition, kind of east of North Marion Road, kind of our northeast part of the city. It's about seven-point-seven acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is really to give the applicant a little bit more flexibility in the setbacks of these, the remaining single-family lots that are up there in grasslands. They do have some floodplain challenges along that east side, and this will allow them to kind of reduce those rear yard setbacks and hopefully continue to put those governor houses and move houses up in that area.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on Item Thirty-Six tonight? All right, Counsel, you got any questions for Jason here?
Move of approval?
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie, to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January Fourth. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please, Tom.
Counsel members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item Thirty-Eight?
Item Thirty-Eight, First Reading and Ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at Three Thousand West Aligar Place from the R.S. Single Family Residential Suburban District to the R.T. One Single Family Residential Traditional District, number one-five-three-nine-two-dash-twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January Fourth, Two Thousand Twenty-Two. Private applicant, Deffenbaugh Construction Incorporated, Jesse Deffenbaugh.
The applicant is Jesse Deffenbaugh. The owner is David Rosinski. It's located at Three Thousand West Aligar Place. It's about point-five-six acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant's looking at constructing a house on this lot, and as you can see, it's kind of a flagpole lot, and that portion that touches the street there is less than fifty feet wide.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on Thirty-Eight tonight? Counsel, you got any questions for Jason on this one?
Move of approval?
Second.
Okay.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen, to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January Fourth. Any discussion, Counsel? Let's vote on it, please.
Counsel members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item Thirty-Nine, First Reading and Ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at Fifty-Fifty-Five East Grant Street from the S-One General Institutional District and R.D. One Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the C-Two Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, number one-five-four-zero-zero-dash-twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January Fourth, Two Thousand Twenty-Two. Private applicant, Willitsen Lund Engineering, Eric Willitsen.
The applicant here is Eric Willitsen. The owner is the Assam Companies. It's located north of East Arrowhead Parkway and west of South Boss Avenue. It's about two-point-two acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking to combine these commercial properties with some existing commercial properties, as you can see, to the south, and then do a future retail development on these lots.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on Thirty-Nine? Counsel, you got any questions on this one? For motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January Fourth?
So moved.
Second. Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Counsel members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item Forty?
Item Forty, First Reading and Ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning a portion of the property located at Fifty-One Hundred East Sixty-Ninth Street from the R.D. Two Town Home Residential Suburban District to the R.S. Single Family Residential Suburban and R.D. One Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts, number one-five-four-three-nine-dash-twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January Fourth, Two Thousand Twenty-Two. Private applicant, Schmitz Calder and Associates Incorporated, Kim Buell.
The owner of this is Rounding Companies. It's located north of East Sixty-Ninth Street and east of South Sycamore Avenue. It's about twenty-seven-point-five acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant's looking to construct a single-family and twin-home residential development.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? Counsel, you got any questions on this rezon?
Move of approval?
Have a second?
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Counselor Selberg, seconded by Sale. That's to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January fourth. Any discussion there? Let's take a vote, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero. Move to item forty-one.
Item forty-one, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located sixty-three oh one East Thirty-third Street from the RD two Town Home Residential Suburban District to the RA one Apartment Residential Low Density District, number one-five-four-four-six dash twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Private applicant Powderhouse Apartments LLC, Josh Kruger.
The applicant and owner here is Powderhouse Apartments. It's located east of South Veterans Parkway and south of East Thirty-third Street. It's about one point seven-two acres in size. The purpose of this rezone is the applicant is looking at constructing three five-unit and then one three-unit townhome buildings on this existing lot.
Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on forty-one? Questions tonight on this one, counsel? All right, look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January fourth.
So moved. Neitzert? Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Neitzert, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item forty-two, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located thirty-eight oh one South Elmwood Avenue from the C three Commercial Community District to the RA three Apartment Residential High Density District, number one-five-five-zero-seven dash twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Private applicant Bob Nats.
The applicant here is Bob Nats. The owner is Charles Jones. It's located at thirty-eight oh one South Elmwood Avenue, just kind of south and a little west of the Western Mall. It's about one point eight-six acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking to construct a four-story, forty-eight unit, fifty-five and older apartment building on the lot.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-two tonight? Counsel, you got any questions on this item?
Move of approval?
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to set a date of second reading on this one for Tuesday, January fourth. Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero. On to item forty-three, please.
Item forty-three, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located thirty-nine oh one West Fifty-Ninth Street from the C three Commercial Community District to the I one Light Industrial District, number one-five-four-nine-three dash twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Private applicant Raven Industries, Alan Jensen.
The applicant here is Raven Industries. And we will be requesting withdrawal from the applicant on this. Raven will still be occupying the building. But as this project has evolved a little bit and looking at their current plans for it, it's really more of an office use with some real accessory light manufacturing. So the current zoning district of C three will suffice for what they're proposing to do there, so we no longer need the rezone.
Got it, thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item?
Sierra Bridge, South Sioux Falls. So I think Mr. Jensen needs to come on record and let the public notify if this is related to him or not. And if it was related to him, then he should have been recusing himself. So the public needs to be aware if there's any ties with Councilmember Jensen on this item.
Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, counsel, looks like we need a motion to withdraw this item.
So moved. Jensen?
Second. Erickson?
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that one's going to pass eight to zero. Move to item forty-four, please.
Item forty-four, resolution establishing the city of Sioux Falls legislative priorities for the twenty-twenty-two state legislative session. Sponsors, council members Erickson and Jensen.
Jim, good evening, sir. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For your consideration tonight is a resolution adopting the city of Sioux Falls's priorities for the twenty-twenty-two legislative session. This resolution reflects not only the priorities of this body, but also our local government partners that include Minnetonka County and surrounding communities. With historic revenue growth at the state level and almost nine hundred and seventy-five million dollars from the American Rescue Act, the upcoming session has an historic opportunity to expand workforce housing opportunities and address local infrastructure needs throughout the state. Earlier this month, Governor Kristi Noem presented her fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget before a joint session of the South Dakota Legislature. In addition to ARPA, the governor projected two hundred and fifteen million in one-time funds and additional hundred and fifty-six million in ongoing general fund revenues by year's end. Later in her remarks, the governor proposed leveraging six hundred million from ARPA for water infrastructure grants with matching funds from communities and the state revolving loan program. The governor also proposed two hundred million from the state's general fund and ARPA that will be tied to a cost-share program with cities and developers to expand wastewater infrastructure and workforce housing projects. Legislative priorities, number one and two, are both in support of those programs. Item number three is intended to allow more low-income seniors and disabled persons to remain in their homes. Under the current assessment freeze program, applicants are ineligible if their home's value exceeds two hundred two thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars. Even though this program has been adjusted annually for inflation, it has not kept up with current home sale prices that have averaged north of three hundred thousand dollars. This resolution requests a legislative review of the home valuation limit. Item number four was brought forward by Minnetonka County and asked the legislature to consider alternatives to incarceration for low-level offenders. And item five was requested by Counselor Janet Brecky and supports what's called the Mission United Culturally Competent Care Act. The basis for this legislation is to address the worsening suicide rate among veterans by funding provider training to include an understanding of military culture, PTSD, and suicide. For the remaining items listed within the resolution, there are no changes from previous years. If we look at next month, the legislative session begins on January eleventh with the governor's State of the State address. We have a legislative dinner on February first, and the municipal day at the legislature is February second. And then this legislature concludes or recesses on March tenth for the mayor's veto. Happy to answer any of your questions.
All right, thank you, Jim. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-four tonight? Come on up.
Go back to the senior citizen one. Hey, I just want to talk, Teresa Staley. Item three there. We're talking about, Jim? We're talking about that's the elderly tax, elderly property tax. Okay, two hundred and two thousand, that's for people in Sioux Falls. And Pam Nelson, our former treasurer, was so good about getting that out there and helping people with that. But they can, they can put a freeze on their tax assessment for their property taxes. And let me just say, two hundred and two thousand. I live in a very modest neighborhood over on Van Epps. Twenty-fourth and Van Epps. Little starter homes. The house across the street from me sold for approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Just drive down my Bel Air drug there where it used to be. Drive on Twenty-fourth and Van Epps. Look at those houses. The house to the south of me, two houses down, sold for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. They're saying two hundred and two thousand is the limit for valuation. I mean, the valuations in our community are just off the charts. So I, last year, when my valuation shot up twenty thousand, I went and talked to Chris Lilla, Director of Equalization. And he said to me a year ago, he says, Teresa, if you want to put, because I'm off the council by that time, he said, if you want to do something that's really going to help our citizens, you go to the legislature and you rally them to raise that level for these people, especially in Sioux Falls, because these property valuations are not realistic. So I'm so happy to see that up there. Two hundred and two thousand is, means that an elderly senior citizen is living in, apparently a modest or medium-income home. Not, not accurate in our town. I would say to this, to you who have the ability to do this, raise that level. Rally for a higher level so that it, it makes sense, so we do not tax people out of their homes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And sorry, I just have to put my two cents in.
Well, we know. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? All right, let's get a motion. We can move to any discussion on it.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen. Counselor Jensen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just like to look at some of the stuff that we've put on there, and it is around housing. And in Sioux Falls, we have, you know, the luxury of increased prices in our homes as homeowners. But like Counselor Sale did earlier this year, he acted and he got the support of his council through working together and actually having a constructive dialogue to get stuff done. Now, we can go out to the legislature and we can work with our fellow counselors, like Counselor Erickson and I. We've experienced the rally cry of some out in peer. And when people come and they work constructively with the legislature, that's how things get done. They're not, you usually don't get anything done by just yelling the loudest. So I'm excited that we, the county and the city of southeast South Dakota have come together and we're just saying, hey, two oh two doesn't work for Sioux Falls. And we're asking them to maybe address that. And maybe they will through us working together as a team and actually building relationships rather than tearing down everything that we've tried to build up. And that's why I really encourage you to look at what Counselor Sale has done with what we did with some of the ARPA funds. That is how you get things done, through consensus, through compromise, through working together in a respectful manner.
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments on this resolution, number forty-four? All right, hearing none on the council. Let's take a vote on it, Tom.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That's going to pass eight to zero. Excuse me. Next item, please.
Item forty-five, a resolution approving the twenty-twenty-two audit plan. Sponsors, council members Jensen and Kylie.
Good evening. Shawna Nelson here. I'd like to present to you the twenty-twenty-two audit plan. This recommended plan was presented and approved by the Audit Committee on December sixth. This year, with a full audit team and the utilization of our new software audit board, we started our audit program planning in September and concluded in November. We were able to streamline the assessment process by automating the survey to identify, assess, and prioritize by the automated system for the city risks with the software. We would like to thank all the city departments for their time and investment into this process. We conducted twenty-eight citywide meetings and had a hundred percent participation. At the conclusion of our assessment, we have identified the following areas to audit. We have nine assurance audits to include facility security, the golf management agreement, two cash handling audits for the Planning, Development, and Finance Department to include utility billing and finance, vendor setup and maintenance, the bidding selection process for architectural engineering services, the reconciliation of AR systems into the MUNIS financial system, employee reimbursements that are not, non-travel. Sorry, I didn't realize. We have two consulting audits to include the fraud task force, and this has been going on since prior to COVID, as well as a construction project. It's a citywide audit to review the project from conception to close to evaluate the adequacy and effectiveness of controls, policy, and procedures. We have two analysis and follow-up audits, the risk analysis that is done annually, as well as the Medco Aquatics Center follow-up, the travel P-card expenditure audit, the bid tax audit, ASM Global Management, and the Ovation's Food Service Spectra audit. And we also have three carryover audits that have been started in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one and will be completed in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, which include the pharmacy three forty B contract, the damage billing assessment, and the ASM global contract. With that, I'll have any questions.
Okay, thanks, Shawna. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-five here tonight? Counsel, you got any questions for Shawna on the audit plan? Hearing none. Other promotion on this item, then?
Move to approve?
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Discussion, counsel. Counselor Sale, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to address the internal audit division for the city council as far as their function and what they provide for us. I've spent three and a half years here on the council, and they've done a lot of audits. The city departments have yet to find any fraud by any city employee, and I'm very proud of that. They, when they review the procedures that these departments go through as far as cash and other things like that, they're there looking for ways to improve that they can do that. So going forward, I'm excited for what the audit plan, the fully-staffed audit team's going to do in our next session. But I do want to point out, there are kind of a checks and balances for the council to make sure that everybody's doing it correctly the way, have yet to find any fraud by any city employee. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on the motion here? All right, hearing none, let's vote on it, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that item's going to pass eight to zero. Move to item forty-six.
Item forty-six, a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen boards, those being Carolyn Lee Donovan and Morgan Jackson to the Disability Awareness and Accessibility Review Board, Gary Fixey to the, and Michael Fisher to Awareness and Accessibility Review Board, Gary Fixey to the and Michael Fisher to the Electrical Board of Appeals and Examiners, Dr. Jeff Fieck to the Falls Community Health Center Governing Board, and Jay Buckholz to the Infrastructure Review Advisory Board.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-six? All right, counsel, can I get a motion to approve these folks?
Move to approve.
Counselor Erickson, motion approved, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any discussion on that one? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote on it, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That's going to pass eight to zero. Move to any new business. We got any new business tonight, counsel? All right, hearing none on that front. Move to public input. Public input, three minutes per person, and on stuff we didn't talk about earlier, so come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Teresa Staley. First of all, I want to wish you all a very blessed Christmas, and I join in with what our pastor, I believe his name was Pastor Best, said that I'm praying for wisdom and compassion and integrity for every one of you, and I always have and I always will. I wanted to talk today about snowgates. I was contacted by several citizens after our last snow event, I believe it was on December tenth, and while I was on the council, many citizens called me about snowgate service. We're coming up on the ten-year anniversary that we did the petition drive, collected those eighty-four hundred signatures to put that to a vote, and it's, of course, a very appreciated service within our community. I heard from people who were thrilled at the snowgate effectiveness. They're doing a great job in some of the neighborhoods, and I have to give accolades to Galen Huber because our past city snowgate manager, city traffic, whatever.
Street department.
Mechanic, street department. I mean, Galen really worked these guys over and taught them how to use those snowgates. My understanding is we have a shortage of drivers, so we're perhaps getting new people in. But I was contacted by people who reported that the snowgates weren't even used in their neighborhoods. So what I'm asking from you and as a council working as with the consensus, working together so well as Counselor Jensen is striving to do, having pacified a beautiful communication. And what I'd like you to do is to relate to me personally, respond to me, or to the media, but two things. First of all, assure us that the snowgates are being put on every motor grader in every neighborhood, even the private contractors. And secondly, if there is a problem, let us know what we're supposed to do to encourage people to get someone to look into it. Mark Cotter has done a fabulous job of being responsive, at least when I was on the council, he always responded. And there were instances where people said they're not being used. Mark checked into it, and indeed, they were not. So people aren't always, you know, making things up. But this last event, I had people saying they weren't, they watched, they weren't even being, there was nothing happening. So it wasn't just that it was so much snow, because some people were thrilled, like I said. So that's that's my request, and have a wonderful, wonderful holiday. And Counselor Jensen, I wasn't, I was actually praising the fact that we raised those, that that amount of money from, it used to be about one eighty-five to two hundred and two. I think you misunderstood what I was trying to say there. But I think we can look at it, and we may need to raise valuations even more.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else for public input tonight?
Sierra Bruce, South Sioux Falls. I want to thank the city government. We didn't have no open violations this this time, so we going on the third week of it, Mayor? So again, the state attorney is still looking at the violations. Again, I'm going to repeat this. I don't care if it's a state violation, and people can laugh, because I'm picking the irks on people's nerves about this one that citizens call me on. A violation is a violation. State Attorney's Office will take it seriously, even if it's a state or a city ordinance. When you have a violation on your record, it's not going to look good. Let's get back to Denny Sanford, why people want to laugh, and sex crimes. A lot of people said, Sierra, I don't know what to do. I work at the American, at the First National Bank Card, and Denny Sanford is still owns Premier Bank and the card system. And I try to tell people to remove themselves from them and go to other banks. Because if you remember, we cannot be finding Denny Sanford. Denny Sanford still owns those Premier Centers. I mean, he owns the bank. I know for a fact. I'm not going to get into all the details on Mr. Denny Sanford, but you're well aware that Mr. Denny Sanford could face it, state charges. I'm very confident that the FBI will come back and charge Mr. Sanford with federal crimes here. When that is done and Mr. Denny Sanford is charged, I'm going to ask that the city break the contract with him and take those names off of those buildings. I know there's a contract for ten years with the city for his name on those buildings. So when that ten years is up or before he gets busted, we need to look at removing those. I know there's a contract with that. I'm going to tell you that a lot of the Premier Bank people are sickening by this. I encourage people that works for the bank and for the for the bank card system to find another job. As the investigation goes on, I'll open up my mouth more, Mr. Denny Sanford, but it's very disturbing what Mr. Denny Sanford is accused of and will be charged with. Often times I come up here about human trafficking. And when it made the news, people should be very not proud of working for the Premier Bank card or for the Premier Bank itself. Denny Sanford still owns it. So I encourage people to look for another job. There's plenty of banks in the area to get another job, but we cannot be supporting Mr. Denny Sanford and giving Mr. Denny Sanford any kind of more money on these credit card systems.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight? All right, not seeing any. I would ask for a motion adjournus.
To adjourn.
All right, motion by Jensen, I think, and seconded by Kylie. Counselor Kylie, we'll take a roll call vote on that one tonight.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr? Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.